Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for being here. At this time, I'll call the Poling County Board of Commissioners' regular board meeting for December the 8th, 2020 to order. I'd like to recognize Mayor Frank Moran, who's with us today, and all of your special guests. So, thank you for being here again. Turn off your mobile devices, Brian. I don't know if you have anything.
And always delighted to call on this gentleman on my right, who's going to bring us our pledge the flag and invocation. Please stand if you're able.
Dear Lord, we come to you now, and we seek your guidance in this meeting as always. We seek for your divine direction on how these decisions should be made, and that they be made in accordance with your will. Lord, please give these folks here the inclinations on how to do that. Father, we ask that you would be with us, be with our community as we continue to do the best we can in this COVID situation. Please give those that are struggling health and give them hope. Lord, I also want to lift up to you Commissioner Davis here, Lord, on his last meeting. Father, we thank you for the contributions he's made. Father, he has had just incredible insights on a lot of issues. Lord, they all have differences of opinion. Ron has always been very willing to make his known, Father, but has always respected the opinions of others on this board and taken those things through the process. Lord, we ask that you'd be with him as he steps forward in his ending this chapter and moving on to a great next chapter. And we ask this in the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
One great thing about Board of Commissioners days is we get to pledge the flag twice, and we get to hear tremendous prayers requesting guidance and leadership.
And calling commissioners stubborn and loud. That's what I heard, right? I guess if you do it in a prayer, it's okay.
Minutes, action to adopt the November 10th, 2020 work session minutes and the November 10th, 2020 board meeting minutes and the December 1st, 2020 call to joint meeting minutes. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Stover. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Carries four, zero. We have no announcements and no invited guests under bid awards. Item number two is action to award the Unified Communications and Contract Center System Plus Dial Tone Services Project to InterDev in the amount of $352,063.61. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Davis. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Stover. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries four, zero. Number three is action to award the High Shoals Parking Lot, project number PR IMP 1091, to the low bidder Helix Group in the amount of $133,299.71. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Stover. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hart. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries four, zero. Reports from committees and departments, none. Public participation on agenda items, none. The consent agenda is action to approve the following agenda items. I don't need to read them again, so I'll just entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Davis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hart. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries four, zero. Old business, none. New business, item number nine, is action to authorize the chairman to sign the 2021 Transportation Services Contract with Transit Alliance Group Incorporated. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Stover. Is there a second? I'll second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries four, zero. New business, number 10, is action to approve the Croy Engineering's proposal to begin design and engineering for Phase Two of Mulberry Rock Park at the cost of $70,900, located in post two. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Davis. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Stover. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries four, zero. Number 11 is action to enter into a contract with Croy Engineering for the design, engineering, and replacement plans for a new pavilion and an outdoor basketball court at Taylor Farm Park in the amount of $56,105, located in post three. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Hart. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Stover. Is there any discussion? Are you going to get out there and play, Chuck?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Chuck, that was basketball, not pickleball.
Item number 12, action to adopt ordinance 20-14, enacting an ordinance for the timing of appointments under the jurisdiction of the Board of Commissioners. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Davis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Stover. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries four, zero. Item number 13 is action to adopt Resolution 20-42 in support of the proposed high-level strategic plan as cosponsors of the Paulding Northwest Atlanta Airport located in post two.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Hart. Is there a second? I'll second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I think I just heard Sandy screaming out, "Aye." If I didn't say it, that carried four, zero. And item number 14 is action to authorize the chairman to approve and execute the application for the Georgia Department of Transportation Fiscal Year 2021 Local Maintenance and Improvement Grant, L-MIG, in the amount of $1,782,124.48, and to approve the required 30% match funds of $534,637.34. The match will be allotted from general funds. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Stover. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any discussion? Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries four, zero. Action 15, action to adopt Resolution 20-43 to provide for the levy and collection of an annual ad valorem tax to provide funds for the payment of the principal of and the interest on the $26,275,000 in aggregate principal amount of the Paulding County School District General Obligation Sales Tax Bonds, Series 2020. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Hart. Is there a second? I'll second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries four, zero. Item number 16 is action to approve the gravity sewer line installation at Old Griffin Road along the entrance of Costco with Wade Coates Company at the proposed unit rates with an estimated total of $97,500, located in post one. Is there, do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Davis. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Stover. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Also carries four, zero. Number 17 is action to enter into a development agreement with William Gregory Coates to relinquish a 400 linear foot permanent sewer easement 20 foot wide in exchange for labor and equipment to install approximately 589 linear feet of eight inch gravity sewer along Duncan Circle in Sunnyland Industrial Park located post three. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Hart. Is there a second?
Second.
I'll second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries four, zero. And finally, there's action to adopt Resolution 20-44 confirming executive session for the purpose of pending potential litigation.
Mr. Chairman, that should also say real estate.
Make that correction, Rebecca. So, for pending potential litigation in real estate, do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Stover. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Davis. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries five, zero. We'll move to the November 17th Planning and Zoning Commission Recommendations, beginning with 2020-23-Z, application by Jason Grogan, requesting to rezone three acres from R2 Suburban Residential to B2 Business Highway to operate a landscaping business. The property is located on the west side of Dallas-Aquithrough Highway, south of Cedarcrest Road in Land Lot 753, District 3, Section 3, at 8575 Dallas-Aquithrough Highway in post four. The recommendation from the planning commission was approval with a vote of four, zero, and one, and seven stipulations. Do I hear a motion?
Dave, I'd like to make a motion, adding to stipulation number seven, changing it to say owner developer agrees this rezoning would only allow the proposed landscaping business under B2, but all of B1 uses would apply. Then might need to be tweaked a little bit, illegal, but...
I think that sounds good, Commissioner Stover.
I'll second, I'll second his motion, Dave.
Okay. We got a motion to amend stipulation number seven to say owner developer agrees this rezoning would only allow the proposed landscaping business under B2, but all of B1 classifications?
Uses.
Uses.
Would apply.
Would apply.
Along with the other six stipulations also.
Okay.
Just to be clear, the motion is to approve the zoning with the stipulations, with stipulation seven being altered slightly to allow proposed landscaping business as the sole B2 use, but permitting all B1 uses. That is the motion in the second, as I understand it to be.
Okay. We have a motion and a second by Commissioner Davis. And is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries four, zero. 2020-24Z is application by Kayla Causey, requesting to rezone 2.03 acres from A1 Agriculture to R2 Suburban Residential to build a single-family home. The property is located in Land Lots 827 and 828, District 19, Section 3, the East Side Highway 101 North, south of Hoag Road in post two. Recommendation was approval with a four, zero, one vote. And I don't see any stipulations, so I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Davis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Stover. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Also carries four, zero. And lastly, 2020-25-Z is application by Jeffrey Dukes, requesting to rezone approximately 0.78443 acres from A1 Agriculture to R2 Suburban Residential in order to bring an existing single-family home into conformance to county requirements. Property is located in Land Lot 1208, District 19, Section 3, at 1267 Highway 101 South, located in post two. The recommendation was approval, no stipulations, the vote was four, zero, and one, and I will now entertain a motion to BOC.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Davis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hart. And any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries four, zero. That's the conclusion of our regulars business. No one has signed up for participation on non-agenda items. We have no further executive session required, and at this time, as has become our tradition, we'll take announcements or gratitude or whatever's on your mind, starting with Commissioner Stover.
Just like I said this morning, for the ones that maybe not watched this morning, but the, the opening ceremony for the new fire station number 12 up off Spring Road is going to be at 3:30 today, and hopefully be staffed coming this Monday, the 14th. So, exciting news, like I said earlier, you know, thank Ron and the past commissioners, Todd and Tony, for starting the project, and just glad to see it finally finished, so. And want to tell everybody Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Did you sing it?
No, sir, you don't want me singing. No, I will if you and Chuck dance.
You want to lead or follow? Chuck, what do you got, sir?
You let him go first again, so, anyway. No, it's, it's exciting, though, things that are going on with the fire department. I know we did, we had a resignation of a deputy fire chief, and they filled the shoes with a, with another guy, and his name is Brandon Newsome. He's a lifelong resident, and I want to congratulate him on his promotion.
I want to acknowledge the hard and difficult work that the Elections Board and all the volunteers have been involved, the board, the staff. They've got tons of emails and a lot of questions that they've tried to answer one by one. So, salute Deidre Holden and her team, and fortunately, Paulding County was squeaky clean. And I'd like to also thank Ron again for his contributions and insight on many issues that have been helpful to the board. And then there's an echo in here, Merry Christmas.
So, I guess it's my turn. I got a few things to say, and I have written down some things here, and I hope that I don't leave anybody out, but if I do, I hope that you will forgive me. We have here in the room again, friends and, well, friends close enough to be family have come to show some support, and that was rallied by Kirsten, I'm sure. So, thank you. She has been a supporter and a sounding board, and at times, an angry constituent over the years, and it's good to have people like that in your life. The friends that I see here, in addition to the ones that are still texting me, I really do think she texted 80,000 people in the county. Some of you became friends after this started, some of you have been friends. I was just telling, I was telling Andy that Chris Wheeler and I have been friends since the mid-'90s back in college, so, before we even knew of Paulding County, Georgia. So, I appreciate you all being here. Dave, as you go into your next term, I hope that you will keep what's, what's best for the county in mind as you lead the board and make policy. I do believe that with, with proper leadership, Paulding's best days are still in front of us, and I believe that very sincerely. Sandy's not here, but Sandy, Chuck, and Brian, you guys came in, I really didn't know what to think when you guys came in, because, okay, well, you're, well, I guess I don't have to worry about being politically correct anymore, do I? When there's three people on your board that you're very good friends with, that all run for reelection, and none of them win, you don't necessarily expect to have a ton of influence with the three people that come on board. It's sad that that's the case, but that, that really is the case. And I told you guys before you started, I said, "I'll work with you as much as you're willing to work with me." But I will be honest with you here, I didn't know how much you'd be willing to work with me. But to your credit, all of you have been amazing to work with, and I feel like we've gone from coworkers appointed by the voters to friends, and, and that means a lot. It started on day one with, with the three of you. We had, it's kind of a fun story, we were all lined up in the hallway, and, and Dave was here, and Frank was over there, and Frank was calling us in as if we were like starters for the high school basketball team. And we're out there, and I said, "This isn't, this isn't right. Like, I'm going to go sit down," and Sandy says, "What are you doing?" And I said, "This is your day. You guys, like, you guys got elected, this is your..." And Sandy looked at me, and first time she got in my face, and she says, "We are on the same team, and you were going out there with us." And I said, "Yes, ma'am," and I stood right there until my name was called. But I think that tone, it set the way we worked together, and I know we've had, we've butted some heads on some things, we've had, I remember one call in particular that Chuck and I gave each other a piece of our minds over the phone. Ironically, neither one of us really have that much despair, so it was, but it's been good, and I know you guys, your hearts are in the right place, and I know that from working with you. Frank, I, I have to admit that Dave was right when he called me and said, "Frank Baker's what our county needs." Some votes that I've cast over almost five years now, some votes, some of those votes are more, they're all important, but some care, end up carrying more weight than you thought they would, and the vote to hire you as our county administrator was a big one, bigger than I thought it was, because you've, you've set the tone for Team Paulding. And there's a quote that says, it talks about leadership, and I don't know what the source of the quote is, but it's, it's leaders, great leaders don't, oh, man, I'm going to butcher this quote. Someone's not a great leader because they go and do great things. Someone's a great leader because they can motivate other people to do great things. And you motivate our department heads and our employees, and Paulding County is a better place to work, and I think ultimately live because of the impact that you've had here. And I appreciate you and the work you've done, I think, more than I could explain to you right now. Jason, I wasn't exactly on the welcoming committee when the board hired you, but that's an understatement, isn't it? Hey, I, I expected that you would be professional and work with me well, because you have an obligation under the bar to do that. What I was pleased to find out is that you are actually a really good person on top of being a good lawyer, and, and I've enjoyed getting to know you and to work with you, and I've said it before, and I will say it here in front of God and everybody, for an attorney, you're a pretty good guy. Fire department heads and our employees, you guys make this work. The, the work that we do here in the county happens because, because of all of you, and I know some of, I say you, some of you aren't here right now because you're out doing the work of the county. I just had a former employee call, which is kind of, it's kind of a nice surprise. Had people grab me and say, "Hey, you know, we're going to miss you," or whatever, but the reality is, and I've said this before too, stuff doesn't happen because of this board, it happens in spite of this board, and I don't mean that against anyone, it's just you, the, the people that do the work in the county are so fabulous, and I hope you all are very proud of the work you do, because you do it so well. In this role as a part-time, and we'll use that term loosely, but as a part-time commissioner, you have to learn to rely on your department heads. And we were talking about this just before the meeting, that I can't, I don't know, I still don't know that much about road, building roads. I have to trust that George knows, and I can take his recommendations, and when it comes to finances, I have to be able to, to lean on what Tabitha tells me, and we all do, and to have such solid department heads working for this county, it takes a load off of the shoulders of the people that are in these seats, because we know that we, we have good data, and we can trust it, and we don't get told yes just because we think that's what we want to hear. It's a, I don't need an army of yes men. I want to, I want to be told what I need to hear and then make the decision, and so I really appreciate all of that. There is a quick quote that I want to read, it's kind of fun. This is, one of my favorite TV shows is, is a sitcom called Parks and Rec, and most of you have seen it, I would assume, but in the finale of that episode, the, the main character had, is giving a speech, and she says, "When we worked here together, we fought, scratched, and clawed to make people's lives a tiny bit better. That's what public service is about, small incremental change every day." And she goes on to quote Teddy Roosevelt, who said, "That far and away, the best prize that life has to offer is the, the chance to work hard at work worth doing." And I, I can't think of work more worth doing than taking care of our communities and the people that are in them. It's really, I said today was going to be bittersweet. Right now, it feels a little more bitter than it does sweet, because every job I've ever left, I've been ready to go, and this one, I'm not so ready to go. But it's the decision that needs to be made. I'm appreciative of my employer who's afforded me this opportunity the last five years. They've been amazingly patient with me and very gracious. It's been a real joy and honor and privilege to serve in this capacity, and I imagine that when I'm, when I'm old, like, like Dave, when I'm old and looking back on my life, I had to get one more in there, Dave, when I'm looking back on, on my life, I will look at these years very fondly, because I really have enjoyed it. So, with that, I will bid you all farewell and wish you a very Merry Christmas.
Do you want to talk about that? I don't know many...
I'm in.
All right, thank you, Ron, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn. I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
Have a motion, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Stover. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, four, zero, we're adjourned.